Organization. Founded in nineteen twenty to educate and empower voters to exercise their rights in a democracy. The League acknowledges encourages informed and active participation in government. And works to increase voter understanding of public policy issues. A League of Women Voters chapter was first established in Davis in nineteen fifty seven. And today with over a hundred members is active in numerous civic activities, including. Nonpartisan candidates forums, voter registration and voter service. Studying healthcare policies and education about the city's general plan. If you are not a member, I hope you will consider joining us. We should take a moment to acknowledge the land on which we are gathered for thousands of years. This land has been the home of the Putwin people. Today, there are three recognized Putwin tribes. The Putwin people have and remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. It has been cherished and protected as elders have instructed the young through generations. We are honored and grateful to be here today on their traditional lands. Tonight, in partnership with Davis Media Access, we are hosting a discussion of key Davis issues. With the candidates of city for of City Council District Three, Donna Neville and Francesca Wright. I'd like to introduce our moderator, Michelle Van Aiken. Who will walk us through tonight's agenda and explain our forum forum process. Thank you and good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Van Aiken. I'm currently serving as Secretary of the Board for the Davis League and will serve as the moderator for this evening's forum. The election to which our two candidates are competing will be held on May second to select the representative to the Davis City Council from District Three. Two characteristics make this election of particular interest. First, it is a special election conducted with mail in ballots only in just one district of the city. And it will be the only item on the ballot. Second, since the previous council member Lucas Frerix was elected to the council in twenty nineteen. The District Three boundaries for this election are those that were in place in twenty nineteen. Rather than based on the boundaries drawn after the twenty twenty census. Now I'd like to explain to you the forum format. First, starting when I'm finished this directions. Each candidate will give a two minute opening statement in the random order determined prior to the forum. Candidates have been informed of the order in which they will begin. After opening statements, candidates will respond to five moderated questions. Starting with the candidate who gave her opening statement second. The candidates received the first three questions prior to the forum. Each candidate will have ninety seconds for her first response to each question. Candidates will be advised of their time with a fifteen second yellow card warning from our forum time keeper Nikki Neff. The time keeper will show a red card when the time is ended. Candidates may be muted if they exceed their time limit. After both candidates have completed their responses to each question. I will ask if either candidate wants to add a forty five second follow up response. After either or both candidates gives a follow up response. I will call on the other candidate if she wishes, and if not, I will continue to the next question. Audience questions will be asked in the final part of our forum. The League received about a half a dozen audience questions prior to the forum via email to the League's website. We'll start with these. In addition, throughout the first half of the forum or until about seven thirty. Audience members may use the question and answer button at the bottom of the Zoom screen to submit questions to the candidates. I will announce the close of audience questions approximately five minutes ahead of time. Or following the fourth moderated question. All questions must be directed to both candidates. Any question directed to only one candidate will not be accepted. The number of questions received and the time remaining in our forum will determine how many questions we are able to consider. Our two question managers are responsible for selecting the questions to be asked. Questions about the same or similar issues may be consolidated into one. So you may not hear your precise question being asked. Candidate responses to audience questions will be limited to one minute. A secondary response of thirty seconds will be allowed to each candidate for each question. We will end our forum with a brief one minute closing statement from each candidate. With the candidate who gave their first opening statement, also giving the first closing statement. I hope it's clear. Now let's begin. Each candidate will now give their opening statement of one minute each. According to the random draw, we begin with Francesca Wright.
And Frances. So the opening statement is now one minute. It was originally two minutes.
Right.
Well, thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you, participants. I am Francesca Wright. My decision to run for Davis City Council was not lightly made. It represents a synchronicity of my personal readiness and a compelling moment in our city's history that demands leadership. Courage, vision, and accountability. California's housing crisis is acute. Covid has disrupted businesses. Our two thousand and seven general plan is outdated. My experience in city governance is grounded in twenty years of working with municipal governments throughout California. I hold a master's degree in public administration from the University of Southern California. Where I coordinated leadership programs for elected officials. I have convened groups to diversify mental health services, support sustainable agriculture, promote public health. Active transportation and support vulnerable children and families. I have helped groups with historic mistrust find common ground and make change. Our city needs catalytic leadership. Thank you.
We'll now go to our second speaker, Donna Neville.
Michelle, can you clarify that it has been changed from two minutes to one or is it still two minutes?
It's one minute now.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you so much to the League and for all of you who are watching tonight. I'm running for the Davis City Council because I have the experience and skills needed to solve the problems facing our city. I spent my professional life as a lawyer in state government, addressing the complex public policy issues. And working to make state and local government programs work better. As chief counsel to the state auditor, I evaluated state and local programs throughout California. Making those programs work better in a way that had a real impact on that on people's lives. I understand what it takes to make change happen in local government. I've also served on numerous city and school district commissions, including the city's finance and budget commission. And I'm also the Namiolo County Board President, which stands for National Alliance on Mental Illness. We have a wonderful city, but we face many challenges. We don't have the money we need to make much needed improvements in our infrastructure. Housing is far too unaffordable for many, and we we face a climate emergency. This is not the time for the status quo. We need council members who understand what it takes to get things done and who know how to make change happen. My decades of experience.
Stop. Very good. I was ready for two. Thank you for those opening statements. We'll now proceed with the moderated questions, beginning with those the candidates have seen in advance. Candidates have ninety seconds in which to give their initial response and forty five seconds for any follow up response. Question number one relates to experience. What specific lessons have you learned about city governments? From your experience working with the city of Davis and the Davis community? Donna Neville will go first.
Great. I served on the city's finance and budget commission for four years where I was chair for two. And I'm currently on the planning commission. And I also chaired the school districts measure on bond oversight committee. And as I mentioned, I currently serve as board president for Namiolo County. Here are my lessons. Be bold and try new ways of doing things. Governing effectively is about adapting to change. Be accountable. If you say you'll get something done, do it. Good governance is about action. Listen, everyone's voice matters. Always remember that you serve the entire community. Be engaged with the people you serve. Be out there and connect with people listening to their concerns. Communicate honestly. Good governance means having honest conversations with the community about the issues we face. Understand process. To govern effectively, you have to understand the processes cities have to use, including public finance. You can't get anything done if you don't understand process. Be persistent at making change happen. Good governance takes hard work and follow through. And given the challenges we face, there's no room for the status quo. We need to act now to address our fiscal and housing challenges. Partner with the experts. We have an extraordinary community of citizen volunteers, nonprofits and experts. The more the city partners with these experts, the stronger stronger we will all be. I understand what it's like to be a community member advocating for change. As well as what it's like to be the decision maker, listening to community concerns. Thank you.
I'm going to repeat the question for the next candidate. What specific lessons have you learned about city governance from your experience working with the city of Davis and the city community? Now we'll have Ms. Wright respond.
Thank you, Michelle. In January two thousand and seventeen, I responded to a call from the National ACLU. Our People Power Group found evidence of inappropriate use of force within our police department. Force that was disproportionately directed at people of color. I worked with then mayor Rob Davis, who demonstrated deep listening and responsiveness and courage. Together, we supported a civic engagement process to collect stories and develop solutions. Our group researched best practices for civilian oversight and police accountability. This collaborative process led to a redefined role of the independent police auditor and a police accountability commission. From this, I learned the power of a council member who took residents seriously. Asked us asked us to do our research and partnered with us through a multi-stepped process for an effective outcome. I will emulate this type of leadership. In my process for advocating for public safety since then, I have attended many city council and commission meetings. I see how respectful process is so important. The best decisions I have seen are when problems are well framed, when they are supported with data. And when the appropriate commissions and community experts have the time to review the material and have a voice. Ultimately, oops, stop. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Ms. Neville, do you have a secondary response?
I do not. Thank you.
Ms. Wright, do you have some anything more you'd like to add?
I would. Um, um, Donna talked about the status quo and the importance to not be. Content with just the status quo. And I'd like to say that's something that I have certainly demonstrated in this town. Not many people would take on what we take on to organize and I really believe that. That the courage to address difficult issues is key to whoever is elected in this position.
Thank you. We'll go now to the second question, which relates to finance. And for this question, Ms. Neville will open. What specific lessons have you learned about city govern? Oops, that's number one. Move on. How would you assess the current and long term financial health of the city of Davis? Given your assessment, what are the most important actions you would advocate for to improve the city's financial health?
Thank you. Um, I actually, in my professional life, I actually drafted the criteria that are used by the California State Auditor's Local Government. High risk program to assess the fiscal health of all California cities. Davis Falls pretty much in the middle when it's ranked against other cities. But let's not be in the middle. Let's find creative ways to address our fiscal challenges. We know we don't have enough money to do all the things we want. We know our roads are in bad shape. And we have a significant funding gap between what it will cost to repair them and what we reasonably expect to take in in revenue. We also know that we have what feels like an overwhelming unfunded liability. That we need to pay down related to our employee pensions and other benefits, but there are ways to address it. First, we need more revenue. This requires a robust economic development plan. That sets out our priorities for attracting and retaining businesses in our downtown and other commercial hubs. We can't flourish if we have empty retail spaces. Second, we need to find ways for the innovative businesses that want to locate and stay in Davis to stay here. This doesn't need to be a large innovation park, but we need to tap into the talent produced here at UCD. And make sure that those innovative businesses that want to locate in Davis can do so. These businesses and the jobs they create will invigorate our economy. Finally, I'll promote more transparency and community involvement in our budgeting process. We should hold public budget workshops where each city department presents its budget and the community has the ability. To weigh in on spending priorities. This will provide greater community awareness of the constraints that we face. Thank you.
Very good. Now let me repeat the question for Ms. Wright. How would you assess the current and long term financial health of the city of Davis? Given your assessment, what are the most important actions you would advocate for to improve the city's financial health? Ms. Wright.
The city is required by law to submit a balanced budget. But that does not mean we have filled sufficient staff vacancies to deliver high quality services. Nor have we set aside sufficient reserves to provide for the long term maintenance needs of our roads, parks and facilities. The annual shortfall is seven point six million dollars, or about ten percent of the annual budget. Clearly, and I'm in agreement here, we need strategies to maximize revenue. And that includes property taxes, sales taxes, hotel taxes, while preserving the character of our town. This will require restoring vibrant retail, attracting tourism and facilitating ease of building upgrade permitting upgrades. I will support the arts, attractive public spaces, local business and improved customer service in our building and permitting. And land use planning. For example, we could increase property tax revenue by accelerating permitting of real property upgrades. And infill. We could use smarter permit application screening tools that require less staff time. And we could add fees for expedited services that could pay for the additional staffing. I will face the harsh reality. We don't have the budget for the roads. I'll skip to my third point. We need a champion to help our local businesses revitalize and our innovators to plant roots to grow the enterprises of the future. The city is in the process of hiring an economic developer. This person will need to meet our business leaders to identify barriers to break and opportunities to create.
Okay, I will turn to Ms. Neville and ask her if she'd like to make a secondary response.
No, I think I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wright, would you like to add anything?
I was just gonna go on to say that UC Davis is generating the talent that creates business innovation. And so our strategy should be to transform that talent into solid business enterprises. So we need to be. I believe that we have enough talent for a good business development here if we grow and support. The creatives in our community.
Thank you. We're move on to question three now, and I'm going to say that in the interest of fairness, I. Erred and had Donna go first on the first two questions, so I'm going to reverse and have Ms. Wright go first on the second two questions. The next two questions, and then we'll be back in our order. Question number three relates to the downtown. And it reads as follows. The Davis Downtown Plan has the potential to bring significant changes to the city. Tell us about your highest priorities for implementation of the plan and why. Ms. Wright, you'll start.
Thank you. Well, first, let me address the premise of the question. The downtown specific plan is the first area in our city to be regulated by form based code. This new model promises to accelerate the permitting process. It has opened opportunity for increased building height up to seven stories in the core and densification along G Street. And is projected to provide one thousand more units of housing. This is not an action plan to be implemented, but rather a land use planning guide for developers as they consider potential projects. The ability of developers to get financing is currently the greatest limiting factor for its implementation. As a city council member, my priority for the downtown plan will be to address two key missing areas. Which are one, planning for the trees, and two, envisioning street scrapes and transportation options. The relationship between the Tree Commission and nonprofit Tree Davis and other tree advocates got a boon with the hiring of our city arborist. This is now a model of excellent staff and community collaboration, and I have confidence our downtown forest will be well planned. The issue of imagining transit as we densify currently lacks the people power needed to problem solve. Four of our six positions in our planning department have been vacant for over a year. The climate emergency demands we plan for a future of clean transportation.
Thank you. Next, I'll repeat the question for Ms. Neville. The Davis Downtown Plan has the potential to bring significant changes to the city. Tell us about your highest priorities for implementation of the plan and why.
Our new downtown plan positively transforms the way we do land use planning in the downtown area. It provides project development applicants certainty about what they can build and where. It also removes many of the barriers that previously discouraged the development of multi-story mixed use developments. That include housing barriers such as parking density and setback requirements. But the downtown plan alone won't revitalize our downtown economically. Nor will it ensure that the housing we desperately need gets built. I have two key priorities. In terms of housing, we need to put additional tools in place. Such as revenue stream for a housing trust fund and possibly housing impact fees or commercial linkage fees. That will truly serve as incentives to building the housing we need in the downtown area. Without these tools, the city has no leverage to require that a project applicant actually builds housing on any given parcel. If elected, putting these tools in place will be my top priority. Economic vitality. The downtown plan needs to be accompanied by a robust economic development plan. That sets out a proactive approach for attracting and retaining businesses to downtown that will bring in additional revenue. And reinvigorate our downtown. We need to reach out to the owners of those vacant downtown spaces and work with them to find viable tenants. This is important because we absolutely need to generate additional revenue and our downtown is the key place to do this. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Wright, would you like to take an opportunity to add some more?
I maybe I'd like to just finish the concept of transit orienting planning because I think the. Downtown plan was a great specific plan, but we need to start looking at other areas of our community where and we need to look. Twenty and thirty years down the road of what our transportation solutions will have to be. And I think had we done that, we wouldn't have had the Brexmore decision that recently occurred. Where we lacked a specific plan for that area to address both transit oriented. Development and mixed use.
Great. And Ms. Neville, do you have a response you'd like to add?
I do. I think it's really important to actually understand the nature of the Brexmore decision. And having had a better transit in plan would not have obviated that decision. The reason that decision was so constrained was because there were no tools in place to provide leverage for the city. To really incentivize that developer to build housing on that property. Had we had in place a commercial linkage fee or housing impact fees. Or some other ability to really exercise some leverage that would have motivated that developer to build housing. That would have been what would have made the difference. Thank you.
Okay. We will now move to the next set of moderated questions. These I'm referring to as extemporaneous. Because the candidates have not seen these questions in advance. Question number four, Ms. Wright will begin. What are the top three issues raised by constituents in District Three? Ms. Wright, you're on mute.
Uh, the most frequent item I hear has to do with the conditions of our roads and paths. Um, the second thing has to do with housing as I talk to young families in particular. And especially those that are renters who want to get into a permanent home. Um, that houses are very expensive and there's not very many available. Um, the, the, thirdly, there's issues of high expectations for services. And and as I think well, Donna and I explained, um, our staffing is at about three quarters of what it used to be. And um, that's because of budget constraints. And so building the expectations and figuring out what the priorities of the community is an interfacing role that council members will need to address.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Neville, I'll repeat the question. What are the top three issues raised by constituents in District Three?
No surprise, I'm hearing the same three things pretty much. Um, our roads are a mess. What are we going to do about the infrastructure? People are concerned about the affordability of housing, and there are also concerns about homelessness. What are we going to do about it? And I hear a lot of concern about issues surrounding the L Street Respite Center. So, um, and I have lots of background addressing each of these three issues. So. In terms of addressing our roads, this is where the meeting, finding the money to repair our roads. This is where my background in public finance is going to be really helpful. There is money available. There's ways to find money to fix the roads, and I I imagine we're going to talk more about that tonight. Um, but we're also. Addressing housing affordability is really at the heart of my campaign. I know that we need to update our general plan. This is key. And we've got to work together as a community to actually find common ground in terms of what our vision is for our city's future. I'm going to promote the development of denser, more affordable housing by continuing to streamline our permitting process. And putting other mechanisms in place, including a stable revenue stream for the housing trust fund. These are tools are essential if we're going to really build the kind of housing that we need. Um, in terms of addressing homelessness, I am thrilled and excited to see what has happened at Paul's Place. And I want to make sure that we provide full support for Paul's Place so that it is fully successful and operational. I'm going to also work to support our newly formed Department of Social Services and Housing. Our new director has fantastic ideas and we need to give her the support she needs to be successful. She's already working on many new programs, the downtown soup. Okay. Time goes quickly when you're having fun. Thanks.
All right. Um, Ms. Wright, do you have other comments you'd like to add?
I have to remember not to be so literal. If I'm asked for the problems, I forgot I have to tell you about my solutions. Um, so along with Donna, I I really do, we have to let people know about opportunities for. Uh, creating multi-generational housing on their property through infill and ADUs. Um, one thing that hasn't been talked about is I'm hearing that there's a quite. One thing that hasn't been talked about is, I'm hearing that there's quite a few residential vacancies. So, we have an uptrending housing market and investors are holding vacant homes. I think we need to consider a residential vacancy tax to look at, once we have the data, to know how many of these are, and of course, we would need to account for extenuating circumstances of families. Other approaches. I'm looking at my list here. I guess I'd also like to clarify, the transit-oriented planning isn't, wasn't the solution to Brexmore, but to have a plan in place that was updated, that could include transit-oriented planting, that could have allowed for mixed use. We did not have a plan in place.
Okay. That finishes question four. I do wanna mention to the audience that our questions will be closing in about one minute. So, if you have, I'm going to ask the last question, and while the candidates are answering that, we'll allow for some more audience questions, and then they'll be closed. Yes, Donna?
Do I get an opportunity to respond?
Did I forget? I'm so sorry. Thank you for reading my attention. Yes, you do. Is there, you'd like to add? While the audience is submitting more questions, you may add some extra comment.
Just a quick comment, which is that I also share in the support for making it easier to permit these accessory dwelling units, and there is a provision in our newly-submitted housing element. We're gonna provide actual financial assistance to people to help permit those and get those sighted, and that could be a very positive thing in our community.
Right. Thank you so much. We're now moving to question five, and this has to do with vision. And Ms. Neville, you'll respond first to this. What is your vision for the city of Davis?
Yes, I, my vision for the city of Davis is a city where children can safely ride their bikes to school, where people who want to live here have, can fulfill the dream of actually having stable housing, where it's possible for working families buy a home that is affordable, where our city, we have a vibrant downtown that is flourishing and welcoming to everyone. I want our city to be welcoming, to be inclusive, and sustainable. I want it to be a place where people of all walks of life can afford to live and thrive. We've, we are, our housing in affordability is literally turning us into a community that is pricing out low and moderate income families, and that is not the community that I want to see in the future. And I wanna work very hard to make our community as inclusive and affordable as we possibly can. And the experience that I have working to solve complex public policy issues lends me to addressing this issue. I know how to take a problem apart, get the facts, really work, listen to the experts, and I really dig in, and I work hard to find solutions that'll work for all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, I'll repeat the question for you. What is your vision for the city of Davis?
Davis has had a very interesting history of attracting leaders who were willing to imagine something different. We have village homes where the water that falls percolates into the ground, and you can walk and gather fruit to bring back into your, your home, where it has a community center. We have walkable, we have a walkable town, where in most areas you can walk to a grocery store, ride your bike. These were put in place in the 80s with very visionary leaders who recognized that how we design our space influences how we use our space, and it influences the connectivity between the people in our space. And, and I would like us to restore that energy and look at all the amazing assets we have. We have a very creative town. We have incredible art. We have an array of, of small family restaurants. We have a wild area around outside of the town. We have birds that people travel to see. I think we need to restore our image, revitalize our image as a vibrant place that cares about the earth, that cares about each other, that has, that makes sure that there's room for every person of every color and every economic background that they can make at home. And that will happen with, with very good land use planning, with very good communication with the, with the community, and with utilizing the, our commissions and talented members of our community.
Thank you. I just want to mention for the audience that the questions are now closed. Do, Ms. Neville, do you have anything you'd like to add to the last issue?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wright? All right. Now, we will start with audience questions. For this portion, each candidate will be limited to a 60-second response. We'll allow a 30-second follow-up response for each question from each candidate, and we'll address as many questions as we are able to in the time remaining. For our first question, we'll turn to Ms. Wright to start. Give me a chance here, there are a lot. Okay. Let me go down. Okay. Okay. Are you ready? Here goes. "As a current renter who has their rent increased every year, I'm very interested in how we are addressing affordable housing as a city. How can we fund our housing trust fund?" Ms. Wright, you're the first to respond.
So, for those in the audience who haven't heard of the Housing Trust Fund, it was recently created through the leadership of some great people in our community as a repository for funds that could go for housing-related programs. So, having the new Department of Housing and Social Services is critical, and I'm really proud to have been a huge advocate for making that happen. By having staff in place, we can go after federal and state house, housing resources and make them more accessible. Just yesterday, I spoke to somebody as I was canvassing who had a very positive experience as a renter, as a senior citizen, accessing information on how he could get subsidies. And I think the renting issue is beyond just the affordability. It's also having climate-resilient spaces, and I would like to address that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Neville, let me repeat the question. Wow. I
I'm okay if you dislike me to go ahead too. I'm fine going ahead.
Okay.
Whatever works for you.
Why don't you just go ahead?
Okay. I've been spending a lot of time thinking about ways that we are gonna find the revenue to put into this Housing Trust Fund, which I see as a really key tool. As Francesca said, there is state and federal funding available. In order to draw down that state funding, though, we need a local match. So, I've been trying to figure out where we're gonna get those local dollars from. And there are a lot of really appealing ideas, this idea of housing impact fees or commercial linkage fees, where basically you impose a fee on a developer who could have built housing there but decided not to. And so, there's a square footage fee that you charge. But also, the more I do the research and look at what's going on statewide with housing, I realize how devastating the loss of redevelopment money has been. And the state now has enacted a number of pieces of significant legislation that are very top-down in terms of directing housing at the local, local level. They haven't given us the tools or the money to be able to really incentivize the building of the affordable and the low to moderate income housing we need. So, I would love to see Davis work together with the League of California Cities to advocate for money in the state budget for that purpose. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Wright, do you have any 30-second follow-up you'd like to add?
I think those are great ideas, Donna, and I appreciate that you put into them.
And Ms. Neville, would you like to add anything?
No, this is what you have when you have two women running for office, you know?
All right, here we go on to question number two. And the first, I, okay, I'm gonna take a deep breath. First of all, Ms. Neville, you'll be responding first to the next question, but before we do that, it was our error and missing the, the proofing of the script that we only gave you one minute for opening statements. So, what we're going to do is, because we have some extra time, we're gonna give you two minutes for the closing statement, so if you, so we'll hope to make up for you that way.
Yeah.
All right, here's question number two for Ms. Neville. "How would you, as a council member, propose to deal with the city's unfunded pension and retiree health liabilities?"
Oh, gosh, that is a big one. Yes, so as of 2021, we had a $221 million unfunded pension liability. And I know that sounds really overwhelming, but we're not alone. Davis shares the same issue as every other, virtually every other city in California, because during the Great Recession of 2008, CalPERS, which administers that fund, lost $100 billion. So, we're making up. But here's the good news. The city of Davis does so many things right in terms of paying down its liability and doing it as efficiently as it can. We use a 20-year forecasting model so we can kind of predict our paydown. We know when we can expect to kind of get over the big hump at the, at the top. We also, every year, we make an annual payment at the beginning of the fiscal year instead of doing it monthly. That saves us $220,000 a year. Our employees have also paid more into their, the share of their retirement benefits. So, we're, we're working on it.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Wright?
I'm sure glad Donna took that one first.
"How would you, as a council member, propose to deal with the city's unfunded pension and retiree healthcare liabilities?"
So, if you look at the trends of, of that liability, it's still going up, and it will still go, go up for seven years, and then it's gonna slope down again. And I think we've addressed the, the, as I think Donna said it really well, in terms of, in the negotiated contracts with our employees, they've taken, they've assumed a greater share. And so, that will change the trend of that, that unfunded liability.
Okay. Ms. Neville, would you like to add anything?
No, I just, yeah, I'll just add one more point. There's just some other things. We are really doing a lot of the really best practices that you can possibly do to pay it down. Whenever we can fund it as fully as we can, we do that. We've also set aside a special fund for the post-employment health benefits so that we're paying that down as quickly as we can as well. So, we're, the best way I can describe it is that we're on top of it. It's a debt we owe, it's payments we have to make, but we're really strategic, and we use best practices to pay it down as efficiently as we can. Okay. And Ms. Wright, would you like to add anything?
No.
Okay. Let me find the third audience question. And this starts with Ms. Wright. "Will you have the courage to challenge an opinion, challenge opinions and votes of other council members even if you need to stand alone?"
Absolutely. I think one of the things about district elections is not that I think it's the best decision-making process for selecting our candidates, but it gives the candidates a time to really understand the issues and concerns in their district, and they are different. We have, this District Three has the downtown, so there's all kinds of changes that are, that residents who've been long-term residents are, are seeing coming forward. And sometimes we have to, we have to, we have to be willing to speak for the people that we're, that we're representing. But it's more likely that instead of it being a district decision, it would be a difference of around the values, around the core values of of what I hold dear. And so, there, as, as you all know, I have been somebody who's, who's, who's stood up and spoke the unpopular that piece, and it's something that is in my character to do if it's needed.
Thank you. And Ms. Neville?
Thank you. And yes, I'm, I'm the same way. I am a speak up, speak out, and, and speak, you know, what your truth is. I understand the importance when you work on a board or a commission or a council of trying to, trying to achieve consensus, but sometimes it isn't possible. So, my first effort is when I'm making a decision as part of a group or a body, is to try to really make sure we're all bringing the best ideas forward and challenging one another. You know, not just saying our position and then moving along, but really challenging one another and asking for clarification if we're not understanding another member's position. But if I, if we can't achieve that level of consensus, I have no trouble voting in the way that I think is more appropriate or represents the interests of
Thank you. Ms. Wright, is there anything you'd like to add? And Ms. Neville, anything to add? All right, we'll move on to question number four. And the first respondent here is Ms. Wright. "If elected, how will you maintain contact with your constituents, and please be specific?"
Oh, thank you. This is something I really hold dear. As I've been talking to constituents, I give them my cell number. I give them my email address. I encourage them to reach out to me. I've developed a database of constituents that I intend to have regular communication with. I believe in getting out there and going to community meetings, going to different groups. One of the joys of being a candidate, I had no idea what is, getting to know the passions and loves of so many groups that I have been peripheral to, that are helping to, that are working really hard for the animals in our community or art in our community, or engaging children in accessing the wilderness, accessing birds, planting gardens. I like being out there. I'm an extrovert, so that's something I'm really looking forward to.
Thank you. That's perfect. And Ms. Neville, how would you stay in touch with your constituents, and please be specific?
Yes, I would also stay in touch with my constituents by being out there in the community. You don't, you're not an effective city council member if you just walk into a, a city council chambers meeting every couple of weeks, and that's your contact with the community for public comment. You have to be out, you have to be everywhere, really meeting people where they're most comfortable sharing their ideas, wherever that might be. And that's kind of been true for me too with campaigning, is you meet so many amazing people and you learn so much more about the neighborhoods. One of the things that I have advocated for is having our commissions, our advisory commissions, meeting out in the town, not at city hall chambers all the time, but out in the neighborhoods, especially when the issue or decision they're about to make is really pertinent to that neighborhood. Let's be out and about in the neighborhoods. As I've been campaigning, I have a campaign email, and I make it a practice to respond to every email someone sends me. And some of them are very long with many, many questions, but that's how you, you engage with people. You want them to know that you are responsive, and you're always gonna be there and respond to their concerns. So, that is really important to me.
Okay.
Is there a follow-up?
Yes.
Oh, I was just gonna, well, I was just gonna suggest that I missed the Zoom commission meetings. I felt like it was accessible, and I, I hope that we think about how to make our commission meetings more accessible than to have to physically go in the rain or, or, you know, it's for a shorter meeting. I find that participation in our decision-making for multiple members of the community is also important.
Ms. Neville, would you like to add anything?
No, thank you.
All right. Moving on to the fifth, and we have seven questions. I'm trying to, I'd like to get to all of them if we can. The next question, Ms. Wright will go first. "What is your position on peripheral development?"
Well, the first thing is that we have opportunities to do infill development, and that should be a priority of making sure that we understand what is available for infill. Peripheral development is thankfully in our community, a community decision. It's a community's decision when we vote whether we want to annex county land It's a community's decision when we vote whether we want to annex county land. And I'm really pleased that the League of Women Voters has begun the conversation around land use planning in the community because I do think we need more conversations about under what circumstances and what kind of development might be something that we would welcome. It's unfortunate that we've had proposals come forth that, that we haven't, that haven't met the design standards, the social standards, the connectivity, the provision of, of housing that is really attractive to families. I think we can do better, but the, I, I'm really pleased that our residents are going to be a part of that decision.
Okay. Ms. Neville, what is your position on peripheral development?
Thank you. So I, I also believe that our first order of priority should be maximizing our infill development because that is what is more economically and environmentally sustainable. In terms of how I would look at a peripheral development project, I've thought about this a lot and there are a number of things, factors that I would weigh in. Have we really fully explored all the options for developing appropriate housing within the city limits? Is there community support for this project? Does it help to really meet our community's need for affordable and low to moderate income housing? How effectively will it address traffic and other environmental impacts? Is the project integrated into our community? Be, be a walking and bypass in a way that makes it feel like a natural part of the community? We need to also be sure that the features that developers are promising are actually in the baseline features that are submitted to the voters for approval and not in development agreements that can easily be amended without voter approval. And those are just factors I would consider. But my first order of priority really is to maximize what we can do within this, within the infill area.
Okay, Ms. Wright, would you like to add anything?
Well, I'd just like to build on what Donna said about develop, development agreements. And I think that is an area that has eroded trust in some parts of District Three when some, some residents feel like some, certain promises have been made. So I agree that the more upfront agreements are in, in, in the language of the measure, the more accountability the voters will have. But additionally, there's a responsibility for council to push hard on getting maximum value for our community and development agreements. And that's something that we have to really keep an eye on and not just let that be a staff decision.
Okay, and Ms. Neville, would you like to add anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, let's go to the next question then. Ms. Wright, you're the first one to start here. Oh, no, I'm on the next one, sorry, Ms. Neville. What skillset knowledge or abilities are currently missing on the Davis City Council? How will you be able to fill those voids?
Well, that's a rough one because I'm kind of assessing my potential for future colleagues. But I will say that one of the really big skillsets that I bring is a real understanding, a deep understanding of public finance. I spent many, many years working in education finance and dealing with other public finance issues. So I, I would definitely bring that to the, to the work, that, that really close look at the budget, that understanding of what the constraints are and how money can be spent and how you can raise money. I'd bring that to the table for sure. But also just my, my understanding of government processes because I spent so many years working to actually evaluate state and local agencies. I know the processes that you have to use to get things done, whether it's negotiating a bargaining agreement or doing a competitive bidding process for a contract or addressing employment issues. So I have a whole array of background in terms of understanding government processes. That, along with public finance understanding, I think are my strongest points. And my persistence.
Ms. Wright, what skillset are currently missing on the Davis City Council and how will you be able to fill these voids?
Well, I believe that sometimes proposals come that have been framed by staff that haven't really looked at a framing that represents how the community is viewing it. So I think stepping back sometimes, for example, when the proposals came for redoing the intersection in Mace, I felt like we had the engineering perspective that was very minute. But what, what we are missing was the bigger perspective of how, how is traffic on Highway 80 diverted before it gets to Davis, when it doesn't, so it doesn't have to go through Davis. So I think there's, there's an issue of being able to step back and reframe. There's an issue of asking for specific data. There's an issue of respecting the process with the community. And then there's the issue of very clear accountability with very clear direction to staff with a timeline to come back and report progress so that, so that good ideas don't drift away.
Okay. Ms. Neville, would you like to add anything?
No, thank you.
Ms. Wright? All right, and we have a seventh question. And this will be, Ms. Wright starts on this one. Mental health has become an urgent matter for our community. Please speak on public safety and how you will make sure that all members of our community, including those who need mental health support, feel safe.
I would argue that mental health is, issues have been with us for a long time. That they're, they've been exacerbated by COVID. That a lot of those people on our streets with, that are suffering with mental illness, our, our children, our brothers, our uncles, they're, they're our family. I worked really hard to right size and right staff, appropriate response for mental health calls. We do have some, some trained people working with our police department now. I've advocated for the Crisis Now project with the county. And I'd like to see that even evolve so that it's, we can discern which times it's not even necessary to have an armed officer response. I worked, I went, the Mental Health Services Act was passed. I worked bringing together families, members with NAMI and clients with mental health illness to work together. I better stop.
Okay, and Ms. Neville?
Thank you.
It has become a great urgent matter, mental health, for our community. Please speak on public safety and how you will make sure that all members of our community, including those who need mental health support, feel safe.
Thank you. I've also been a huge advocate for the implementation of the Crisis Now model. This is a, a federal model that actually calls for a mental health response to a mental health crisis and not a traditional public safety or police response. Because what has often happened in the past is that individuals who are in the throes of a crisis have their behavior criminalized and they ended up, they end up finding themselves in the criminal justice system and not getting the help and support they need. So our city currently has put $2 million into funding this model. The county's working on it. Unfortunately, it is behind schedule and is already being retooled to sort of modify its approach. And I'm really concerned about that. And I'm going to work really hard to make sure it's fully implemented in our county because it ensures the safety of everyone, those who are experiences, experiencing a serious mental health issue, but also our community as well. And I'll just mention too, as an additional issue, is that there are a lot of concerns related to safety. Oh, okay, okay, time's up.
Okay, what, Ms. Wright, would you like to add anything?
My mouse wasn't cooperating. I would also like to talk about prevention and how providing affordable housing helps relieve mental illness by having a, this relieving the stress of not knowing where you're going to live. I think our day treatment center does a beautiful job providing a safe place where the unhoused can, can shower. They can take rest, they can charge their phone, they can search the internet. I think we have to think of mental health before we get to mental illness. We have to think of how do we create the community that provides enough grace for those that are anxious or fearful or suffering from a mental illness or a brain trauma.
Thank you. Ms. Neville, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I, I could probably talk about this issue all night, but I know I have probably 30 seconds. So I'll just also say that lifting up Paul's place and making sure it has the support and needs to be fully operational is a key priority for me. That is just a monumental achievement, but that facility needs at least a million a year to be fully operational. And one of the things I've been working with as part of NAMI is to bring in, potentially bring in in-person support groups there for mental health services. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that, but there's so much we can do to help mental health issues in our community.
Okay, and Ms. Wright, anything to add? Okay, I'm going on to question number eight. This is great. We've been at opportunity for lots of questions. Let's see, and Donna, Ms. Neville, you're starting with this one. If it is not possible to provide affordable housing for all, how do we handle this issue? What infrastructure would help? And what other tools could the city council employ?
Can you, can you say that again?
I was just gonna ask you. If it is not possible to provide affordable housing for all, how do we handle this issue? What infrastructure would help? What other tools could the city council employ?
Um, I'm, I'm not fully sure I'm understanding kind of what the question's trying to get at, so I'm going to do my best here. I, I know that, you know, it's probably not really feasible to always provide housing for everyone and, and we have to absolutely do our best. We, we know that as a community, we have to meet California's fair housing goals. We have to be able to provide enough housing so that we are serving our community. And the underlying policy goal is that you shouldn't have people driving long distances to, for a job in a community where they can't afford to live. We need to be able to provide housing for people. I'm not sure if the questioner is trying to get at the notion of safe camps or not. So I, I don't, I'm hesitant to, to answer that question. I'm just not really sure what they're, what they're driving at. I, I think what you do to address affordability is you, it's an all hands on. You, you do everything you can to do affordable infill housing in, in our community. Okay, I'm up.
So, okay. Ms. Wright, if it is not possible to provide affordable housing for all, how do we handle this issue? What infrastructure would help? What other tools could the city council employ?
That's a question that kicks me back in my heels too, because I don't think we can provide affordable housing for all. I think it's our moral commitment to maximize the affordable housing that we can make available and to provide, ensure that there's safe shelter. And safe shelter for the unhoused includes a winter shelter. And as Donna alluded, there was discussion at one point of, of some kind of authorized place where people could go to if they don't have shelter. Right now, we have our winter shelter funded through ARA funds, but COVID disrupted the rotating winter shelter that we had. I mean, we have to have, start having that question. So when people are in transition, is there a sanctioned place where they can go? I, I don't have the answer for that. I've heard proposals for something near Communicare property of the thought of possibly building a sanctioned campground, but we haven't had the community discussion on that, but it's a discussion that we need to have.
Okay, we are moving to our final audience question. And Ms. Wright is the first responder to that. When implementing new ideas, there can be backlash to change from community groups. How will you hold the line that allows for innovation to proceed despite opposition?
Well, that's another very philosophical question. And I think part of it goes to having integrity and working with people with integrity and checking in with people. It, it's hard to answer that question in the abstract and I'm sure the, the author had some very specifics in mind. Sometimes decisions happen. I, I've made proposals to council and they've ignored me, but I've had to move on. So, but I think it's, it's being human with each other and, and commiserating with each other and recognizing, yes, these changes come that we didn't choose. And that's part of the lesson I think we're learning from COVID is that, that, and with climate change, is that we're living in a very disrupted society. And the best help for that is to be really good neighbors, to watch out for each other, to talk with each other, to make sure each other has what they need. Because I believe it's that fabric of social connectedness that will supersede some of these changes that we are learning to adjust to.
Thank you. Ms. Neville, let me ask the question again. When implementing new ideas, there can be backlash to change from community groups. How will you hold the line that allows for innovation to proceed despite opposition?
It's a great question. I think one of the things that really helps to prevent backlash when you're affecting change is to first of all, have really true community involvement and community engagement at the outset so that you have heard from everyone about what you're going to do. And you, they feel listened to and you've really considered their perspective before you go about making the change. And then as you're doing that work, whatever it may be, you keep everyone informed and in the loop. It's so important to do that. I mean, some of the work that I do at NAMI, you know, we have affiliation with homes that house individuals with serious mental illness. And there can sometimes be neighborhood opposition to having individuals with a serious mental illness living in their neighborhood. We have to be good neighbors, reach out, tell people how to reach us if there's a concern and honor our commitments. So a big part of it is engaging the community at the outset and bringing everyone along. And then you just, sometimes you just have to hold firm on the change you're making.
Ms. Wright, would you like to add anything? All right, very good. And Ms. Neville, anything to add?
No, thank you.
All right, that concludes our audience questions then. Each candidate will now give their closing statement. And provided they can add some of their opening statement into the end, they'll have two minutes in which to do that. We'll begin with Ms. Wright. Since she also.
Well, thank you. I haven't rewritten my closing statement, so it will probably be a minute because that's what I prepared. So I hope I've convinced you that I'm the problem solver who gets things done. I'm running to bring vision and take action so that Davis can be an inclusive and sustainable community into the future. I want us to get on track with land use planning, address neglected infrastructure and include rental properties in climate resilience planning. I have a long history of mobilizing for social justice and positive change in Davis. I'm an independent thinker and I'm not beholden to any special interests, bargaining units or the political elite. I bring energy to plan for more family and workforce housing. I have the training, I have the experience and I have the leadership skills to help our city get on track. I ask for your vote on May 2nd. Learn about me at writefordavis.org.
Thank you. And Ms. Neville, you'll be our closing speaker.
Great, thank you. And I want to thank everyone who's been here tonight listening to us. It's been really great to have this opportunity to share my ideas with you. I came to Davis in 1987 to attend law school here at King Hall. I met my husband here who's an ecologist and a professor at UC Davis. This is where we raised our son who attended Davis Public Schools. And it's also care, where I care for my aging parents who came here late in life when my mother was ill. This community has given so much to me. And for me, running for council is a lot about giving back and continuing my public service. If I'm elected, I'll work really hard for you. I'll address our city's fiscal issues so we can continue to fund the services that you care about. I'm going to work tirelessly to tackle the hard issues surrounding housing availability and affordability. And I'm also going to work to address climate change, which we haven't really talked about here tonight. And I'm also going to address any other unexpected issues that might arise. My extensive background solving complex policy issues and improving how government programs work have prepared me well to address these issues. I know how to go from identifying the problem, gathering the facts, devising a solution and then working in a creative collaborative way to put that solution into action. I commit to you that if I'm elected, I will listen to you even when we may disagree. I'll do my homework and work hard to make the best decisions I can for our community. I'm a dedicated professional, I have, I've dedicated my professional career. I'm a dedicated professional, have I've dedicated my professional career to improving how government programs help people all over California. Now I want to dedicate myself to our community. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. This includes both the closing statements and the Davis District Three City Council Candidate Forum. As you leave your Zoom meeting, a brief evaluation will appear on your screen. We hope you will complete it to make your next forum even better. The forum has been recorded courtesy of Davis Media Access and it can be viewed until May second on our league website at L W V davisarea.org. It will also be available on the Davis Media Access website, Please encourage your neighbors and other District Three residents who were not able to attend this evening's event to take a look at them to prepare for this election. Thank you to the candidates Francesca Wright and Donna Neville. I'm glad I'm not having to make the decision. It was delightful listening to both of them. And to the league members who participated in preparing this forum. Mary Jo Bryan, the League of Women Voters Davis Area President, Linda Lapp and Bob Fung, who functioned as co-chairs, Komohak, our technical coordinator, Joanne Bowen and Michelle Famila, who managed our questions behind the scenes, and our timekeeper Nikki Neff. This is your moderator, Michelle Van Eiken, thanking you for your participation. Have a great evening.